Welcome to this morning's meeting of the LTP Annual Plan Committee Meeting. So please let either myself or the Democracy Service Advisor Cyrus know if you intend to leave the meeting. Morning tea will be at 10:30. We've got a very special function to attend, so lunch will be at 12:30 promptly. We will have to stop our meeting to make sure we can leave at that time. We will probably be reconvening around 3:30, I need to get that confirmed. And then we will be running through until some time in the evening. And again, I'm sorry, but I don't need to get that time absolutely confirmed. I'll come back with those times after morning tea. And I'd just like to say again, in case I forgot, welcome to everybody in the gallery. And we normally start, I declare the meeting open, and we normally do start with a karakia.
All right. Okay, so apologies. I don't know that we've received any. councillor Young for lateness. I move that we accept the apology for councillor Young for lateness. Do I have a second? Yes. Thank you, Malcolm. Let's vote. Oh, okay. Well, that's two then.
Conflict of interest declarations, do we have any? Thank you councillor Funn. Would you like to explain?
Kia ora, thank you Chair. I am a trustee on the Newtown Community and Cultural Centre. I believe they put in a submission for the long-term plan, but I do not believe we'll be debating that today. Just flagging it.
Okay, so do you think you do have conflict of interest?
Not really, just wanted to keep it clear.
You just wanted to explain that your involvement there. Okay. I don't think that it probably, I don't think that is a conflict of interest, but thank you for explaining.
Great, thank you.
Confirmation of minutes. I move that this committee approve the minutes of the annual plan, long-term plan committee meetings held on the 18th of May 2021, the 19th of May 2021, and the 20th of May 2021, which have been circulated. I move that they be taken as read and confirmed as accurate records of that meeting, do I have, of those meetings. Do I have a second? I thank you councillor Matthews. Oh, there is debate? Okay.
So I just wanted to check, in one of those meetings, I inadvertently voted for councillor Day right at the end, sorry, and she had councillor Day picked it up because she watched it. Sorry. And there was a division on that vote. And when I checked the original minutes, it hadn't been fixed. And I just wanted to make sure it had been fixed.
The last hearings.
Which, which date was it? Oh, yeah, cool.
It's okay, it's got to get these things sorted and corrected.
It's just proof that I've watched and listened to all the hearings.
There's no prize, you know.
Do you remember the issue?
The very last vote. It doesn't really matter, except it's not a, it's not a great thing to have happened because the person wasn't here who voted. And there was a division. And she, the other minute said she wasn't there. Brilliant, thanks so much.
Are you happy that that's been satisfactorily corrected? Okay, I've, I've moved now that we put it to the vote. Green for yes, red for no. And that's been carried. Thank you, colleagues. So there are no items not on the agenda, but we do, of course, come now to our public participation. So we have a list of public participants. Thank you all for coming in today. If you're an individual, you'll have five minutes. If you're representing an organisation, you will have 10. Normally, the time goes up on the display up by the ceiling there. But I'm also able, if you'd like, to give you an indication of when you've got a minute left by raising my hand or otherwise signalling. So just let me know if you'd like that. So I'd now like to invite up Colin Keating. Welcome Colin. And as an individual, you have five minutes.
Tēnā kōtō, tēnā kōro, tēnā kōro kātō. I was born in Wellington. I'm a lifelong proud Wellingtonian. And I've been a Wellington ratepayer for more than 45 years. I think this is perhaps the point in time in my whole life in which Wellington is facing its biggest challenges, and particularly the challenges for ratepayers confronting unprecedented cost increases in their rates. And this will impact both business and residential ratepayers. Now, I know you all know that this is going to be very difficult for a lot of ratepayers. For some, it's going to be an intolerable burden. Now, I know also that it's a very difficult time for all of you elected councillors, and I sympathise and respect you for the problems that you've got. And I'm here to offer you some constructive thoughts about the way in which compromises could actually result in changing the current paradigm in the long-term plan. In particular, I would like to strongly urge you all to vote, to take some time out, a short pause, to try and forge some very necessary compromises to reduce the rates burden that is staring down the barrel for everyone in the city. I think you're all very much conscious of what would happen at the national level if any government were to propose a 13 or 15% increase in, say, GST, or across-the-board increase in, in personal tax of the same order of magnitude. They wouldn't be around after the next election. So I suggest that it is time for a new paradigm. And I strongly urge that you all please come together, please make some compromises, and show the public that you really understand the pain that they have to confront. And please find some seriously big cuts to the proposed rate increases. This is a desperate time, and in desperate times, we need to focus on essentials, not on the nice-to-haves. We need to focus on what is good, not what is perfect. So I want to make some comments on the six big decisions. Firstly, fixing the Three Waters is essential, and including the laterals. Please do it. Remediating the library is essential. But costs must be cut. Last time, you chose the gold-plated option. It is essential to now shift to a lower-cost option. There were such options on the table. And I know that there is now a new one with the viscous damper proposal. If that technology can produce a much lower cost, then please proceed that way. Cycle ways, I love cycle ways, but they are a nice-to-have. They are not what we need in desperate times. Significant cuts need to be made in the long-term plan provision in that respect. There are also a lot of nice-to-haves under the climate change provisions of the long-term plan. This needs rigorous pruning. And the most effective thing you could do is reduce the carbon impact of the council's work by voting to stop unnecessary building and construction. And I've got some suggestions on that front. On sludge minimisation, yes, to cost recovery, but definitely no to a levy. I think it's time for the council to shift to a new approach to water charging. This reduces demand. It is environmentally far superior to a levy, and it can be designed to be fair to all.
You're nearly out of time.
On civic square tēnāko, please, please do not proceed to demolish and rebuild, and particularly using a private sector model. Find a compromise, and one that enables us to have that land free and open space for all New Zealand ratepayers here in Wellington.
Thank you very much Colin. That's been useful to hear your views. Thank you for coming in. Thank you.
Kia kāha.
Thank you. I'd not, next, like to invite up Ta'farri. Oh, all right. Okay, sorry, that's a little different to what I've got on my sheet. Sorry. Yes, Megan Williams. If you'd like to leave time for questions, that does need to be included in your overall time allotment.
Sorry, say that again.
If you want to leave some time for us to ask questions, that needs to be included within the 10 minutes.
Cool. And I have a presentation, I think. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you today. My name is Meg Williams, and I'm the executive director of Ta'farri. For those of you who haven't heard the name Ta'farri yet, it's the name for the umbrella trust that runs some of Wellington's major arts events, the New Zealand Festival of the Arts, the Wellington Jazz Festival, and Lexus Song Quest. I'm here with Stace from Arts Access Al Teirua, and Ian, who is the Chair of Tefaya, in case you have any questions for them or on the wider project later on. Now firstly, I appreciate you've got a big job to do here, and have undergone a huge process in this long-term plan with lots of difficult calls. And I can see that you're working to create a healthy and vibrant city for all Wellingtonians within the serious fiscal constraints that you face. As a festival organisation, we work right across the sector with all the venues, many artists and companies, touring promoters. And they're all facing a very similar dilemma, to make great things and make a great city on really tight margins. I'm here today because I believe strongly that a healthy creative sector makes Wellington the place where people want to live, work, and visit. And what I'm hearing from this council is that you believe in that too, from a cultural, wellbeing, tourism, and economic perspective. However, as you'll have heard through the long-term plan process and the Awhotini submissions, the creative capital story is really challenged at the moment. We have closed venues for years for strengthening, funding stagnant, and sponsorship fundraising in decline. Our local artists are priced out of our city venues, and touring promoters are skipping out Wellington. Crew, creatives, and our industry graduates are being forced to leave this city to find work elsewhere. Now, there is no one silver bullet, but I do believe we have a cost-effective solution on the table here that will go some way to addressing those serious issues. Fantastic. So for nearly two decades, there have been calls for the city to invest in an accessible, affordable, mid-sized flexible venue at around 500 to 600 seats or 1,000 standing. It's important that it has more capacity than the many small venues we have, so that we can attract larger audiences and generate ticket income. But it crucially needs to be affordable enough to use, that our local companies aren't priced out. And many are today in the larger venues. There was a report commissioned by council in 2016 that recommended a mid-sized venue be scoped, and it was highlighted again in the Wellington Venues Review. It's been reinforced through the sector through the LTP process. It's been called for by professional artists and companies trying to produce and present work here, and for national artists touring here. To create a new building from scratch would be in the tens of millions excluding the land value. The similar ASB waterfront theatre in Auckland costs 35 million, and the council is already investing heavily in existing heritage infrastructure. We know we can't do that. But we believe we have found a cost-effective solution which is fitting out of an existing council building, a warehouse space in the complex at Tefaya in Newtown. This is a solution that works well for Tefaya, who also need more studio access for Toifakari and the New Zealand School of Dance Students. We've assembled a fantastic team of collaborators to work on the project and have scoped a full feasibility study. Stace here from Arts Access Al Teirua, I'm very grateful to him. He's advocated for us to use universal design, which means the space will be designed to be inclusive for everyone, but particularly for artists and audiences who are disabled or with access needs. It'll be one of the very few venues like this in the whole country, something Wellington can be really proud of. As one of the major arts organisations in the city with the expertise and the means to take on a project like this, we do feel responsible to step up, to play a bigger role, to address this wider issue on behalf of the sector. We also have the support of Venues Wellington, who see this as an essential addition to the city's venue offering. We will, of course, use the space for our festival events, which saves us building a mid-sized theatre in the TSB Bank Arena, which costs hundreds of thousands of dollars, money that can be reinvested to covering much of the venue overheads. We will only be using it ourselves for the artists that we commission and develop for 17% of the average year. So for the rest of the time, it will be used by local companies and incoming tour parties. It'll be able to be used for development of work to be staged either there or to move into the other city venues. So at around $10 million total cost total, we're only requesting 35% from council, and we will undertake to fundraise the remaining funds. The ongoing overhead costs can be met by Ta'farri, and a modest higher income from users. Obviously, affordability for users is key. Now, we know that councillors will want to know more details about this project, and the shifts that are planned between the different user groups up on the Tefaya site. And we have all that info prepared between us. We're really looking forward to the opportunity to do that soon ahead of the project being confirmed. So what we're asking today is that the provision for these funds be included in the long-term plan. My understanding is that the bulk of the funds are capital, they do not have an impact on rates. Ian at the team at Tefaya has worked for many months to gather a coalition of the willing and the various players up at Tefaya. There's an agreement here on the table, and we believe that there's a solution that suits all parties can be found. So what I'm asking of councillors today is to please retain the recommended inclusion relating to the Tefaya Tu'afafa Capital Gym in the plan, and please keep this option open. Once the project's been scrutinised by councillors, it can be ready to move forward quickly, meaning the warehouse could be used as a temporary venue for the 22 Festival of the Arts next year. And then it'll be properly fitted out through 2022, and operational for the community from 2023. If the provision isn't included in the LTP, the project will be too far delayed and the opportunity lost. So we ask you to please help us make the creative sector more sustainable here, and for us to live up to our creative capital potential as a city. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. And I can see one from councillor Fitzsimons.
Thanks so much for coming in. And what an exciting project. Can you just, I just missed the timeframes. Can you just run through them again?
Yep. So we'd hope to use the space temporarily as a sort of temporary venue in 2022. Then it will be, all the construction and fit-out will be done through the 2022 year with a healthy contingency built into that. And then it'll be open in 2023.
councillor Matthews, thanks.
Welcome. And I do have a question for Stace, if that's okay. Just, what difference will it make to disabled artists and audiences to have, you know, an accessible venue of this size in Wellington?
It would make a huge difference. There are so few venues around the country, let alone in Wellington, that are accessible. And the advantage of going with universal design principles is that it's accessible to everyone to the greatest extent possible. So it would make a massive difference.
Thank you. councillor Calvert.
Thank you. Can you just clarify how, because Capital Gymnastics are currently in that building as well, and I understand there's some agreement with them. How will the work that you want to do enable them to retain in that building? Or is there some other arrangements?
Yeah, I'll address that. So as Meg has mentioned in her presentation, we've been working for a very long time now, six or seven months, I guess, with the tenants in the building to see how Capital Gym could be retained. They, the space that the warehouse facility will be in is currently occupied by Capital Gym. They are on a monthly lease, the only short-term lease within the building. So we've been negotiating with other tenants who occupy the building, in particular Wellington Indoor Sports. And there's an opportunity that's come about through discussions with them that enable Capital Gym to occupy an alternative space within the building on a long-term lease, thus making available space within the building for Ta'farri. Does that answer your question councillor Calvert?
I mean, I just was really inquiring about when you're doing the work for the venue, will they have to move out? Or will you be able to accommodate them through that?
No, we'll be able to seamlessly relocate them into other space and allow the works that Meg has talked about to be undertaken. So it won't disrupt them at all.
Okay, thank you. I also, can you comment on the location? You know, I cited it sort of on the edge of Tiaro and Newtown. Is that going to be a great accommodation for this kind of thing? Or can you just comment on?
It'd be fantastic to have somewhere right in the middle of the, absolutely, the heart of the city. But I think that, you know, it's in close proximity to the city. Newtown already has a track record of attracting audiences there. The Newtown Festival is a fantastic example of that. There's plenty of gig venues happening there. And I think that one of the things that Ta'farri will be doing through our marketing power from the festivals as well, we've also got a good track record of bringing audiences to venues all across the Wellington City and the Wellington region. So we're really confident that it can become a new destination for audiences to visit. There's great transport links, good parking. And there's also obviously a vibrant community in Newtown itself. And that'll be one of our key neighbourhoods that we want to attract to, so.
Okay, lovely. Well, that's been really a fulsome explanation and good questions, I thought so. But we have run out of time. So thank you very much for coming today. So I'd now like to invite up to the table Geraldine Murphy from, and you are from Innisiti, but I understand you're presenting as an individual. So, yeah. So that means there's five minutes, and you know how quickly it goes. Would you like me to give you a little flick when you've got them? Okay, good. What was yours?
All right, thank you. I'm calling on council to retain the Building Resilience Fund for non-heritage earthquake-prone buildings. Owners and body corporates are paying substantial sums of money just to investigate if the building is earthquake-prone, and what their solutions and options are. This can range for body corporates, this can range from 50,000 to 100,000 if you're lucky, and just have to do a detailed seismic assessment and be found to be non-earthquake-prone. Or if you're unlucky, it can get up to over half a million dollars before you even start the work. For some owners, it's multiple DSAs as engineers decide to pull out. It's multiple concept solutions, reports as they find that the options that have been given are just too expensive. Then it's, then it's geotech, then it's fire safety, and then it's peer review reports, and maybe multiple of those as well. These costs are before the work even starts. At this point, at that point, based on our 2020 survey, where we had, there was 20, 76 owners reporting, 302,000 was the average cost for construction alone. And that's not the full project cost. And it's not a fixed price. The funding isn't high, that, you know, the grant isn't out amount. The funding isn't high, the grant amounts aren't high, but it means the owners can actually fund other strengthening work, and the money that the council gives is not the full cost for the costs incurred. The fund recognises that there is a public benefit from strengthening. This is not just about the owner's safety. This policy has never been driven explicitly by owner's safety, it is driven by public safety, and a recent select committee report actually reinforces that. It also recognises that council initiated its own earthquake-prone building policy after the Building Act 2004 was introduced, without any implementation support or systems or mechanisms. If WCC can fund the laterals for Three Waters work because of issues in resilience and things like that, it can fund half a million dollars each year for owners who have been forced to, you know, to compliance burdens for what were compliant buildings. You know, the non-compliant buildings are compliant buildings. And I believe, I really believe, that if central and local government had actually fronted up at the time when this legislation came into force in 2004, and again in 2016 with the change, if they had put in effective assistance and implementation support mechanisms that really actually helped owners, that were owner-centric, all these, many more buildings, particularly the high-rise multi-owner apartment buildings, would be done by now.
So we do have a couple of questions. Could be useful. So councillor Panna, if you can keep it brief, because there's also councillor Fitzsimons.
Two questions. Are you surprised that this amendment has come at the last minute, particularly at 1:25 AM this morning? And also, is it your understanding, because you've done a lot of work with owners, that they are ordinary people who own a home, not wealthy people who have got the means to fund this work?
They are ordinary owners. There are people in dire, dire straits. The stress on those people trying to manage these projects, they are high-risk projects. They risk losing their homes and all their money just by trying to comply. It is terrifying for them. And, you know, we didn't, I C W put a submission about how we, about the importance of this fund, how it could be expanded in its criteria. And I had actually been looking for it, because I was wanting to help an owner to find out when the next round was, and I couldn't find it, and I started to look in the papers to say, well, where is this stuff? Why can't I find it in the long-term plan stuff? So it was hidden, implied that it was going through, and then all of a sudden it's not, you know? That's, how does that happen?
councillor Fitzsimons, thank you. councillor Fitzsimons, can you keep it extremely brief?
I don't know.
Well, it is important, and I guess I'm trying to understand what your position is on the public policy grounds for this fund as opposed to something like a loan scheme which could actually solve the problem, because when I look at the applications, we are giving a tiny amount to people who are already building owners that by their own admission makes no difference to the overall cost. So on public policy grounds, why would we do small crumbs versus a loan scheme that would actually solve the problem?
If the loan scheme was available to everybody, then, you know, and it was now, but the problem with a loan scheme is that that's after you do all this work to determine what you actually have to borrow. People are spending hundreds of thousands of dollars just to get to that point. And, you know, any little bit, yes, it's only a small amount, but it's an acknowledgement, and it should be, you know, central and local government, that there should be public money coming into this. This has been driven by society's adversary, you know, society's aversion to large-scale deaths in a single event. Well, if society has that aversion, then society has to help pay for it.
We have run out of time, but it's been very useful hearing from you. Thank you for coming in. I'd like to invite up Helene Ritchie, who's speaking to us as an individual about Mob and Cab. You will have five minutes, you know the drill.
A sign?
Yes, I can give you a sign.
I just thought I might just sit her there.
The floor is yours.
Thank you very much. So I want to focus very briefly and quickly on the MOB, the CAB, and ask that you do not demolish and you do not sell the ground underneath it, couched as a long-term lease. I'm Helen Ritchie, Kia ora, and I'm the former chair of the Civic Centre Project, former deputy mayor, but more importantly, a neighbour of the Civic Centre for nearly two decades. I was, not now. I was shocked and enraged to see that today you are poised to demolish two key buildings in the Civic Centre, Tanako, to approve, you are poised to approve seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to fight your own ratepayers with their money and to sell ground, public ground in the Civic Centre. I'm asking you, in a constructive way, to take time out, as you've heard already, and lie this matter on the table so that you can consider particularly the carbon cost impact, but also for a range of reasons which I've outlined in my submission, the key points of which are privatisation, destruction, and I just want you to imagine what it will be like with trucks coming into the Civic Centre during the day or maybe at night when people are sleeping. The neglect, the ongoing neglect of Civic Centre, which will be moribund for years if you take the project, the approach that you have. But more importantly, it is contrary to your climate change plans and your waste management plans. There has to be a proper assessment of the carbon cost. Gordon Moller, who was the architect of these buildings, has said, "This demolition is a huge mistake, a backward step. Both these buildings are fixable." I want you to focus on that carbon cost. I want you to seek advice from Andrew Eagles, the CEO of the Green Building Council. Ask him about the building, the fifty-year building in Auckland that they repurposed for carbon cost reasons, and I'd like to see a councillor appointed to lead the Civic Centre project as is needed and to represent the public interest in this project. I would suggest that that councillor would be Tanga Tafanua, someone who has had climate change as her core reason for being on council and who was award councillor. You councillors are kaiteaki of this, of the Civic Centre. You are kaiteaki of this Civic Centre, Taonga, but instead of the care and stewardship that you should have taken, you have failed. You have failed to manage this asset, and you do a grave disservice to the people of Wellington. And your legacy, your legacy of this council, if you continue on this course, will be one of neglect. Instead, I want you to lie this on the table, I don't want you to lie on the table, well, you can. I want you to lie this on the table to focus on proving carbon reduction for any project, not to demolish but to repurpose these two buildings, and to take the project forward, not sideways to a court, court hearing, court costs, and fighting your own ratepayers here for the Civic Centre, thank you.
Okay, I think we have one from councillor Rush.
Thanks. Thanks, Helen. I mean, these buildings are unoccupiable without millions and millions of dollars to be spent, which themselves will have massive carbon footprint. What do you say to the ratepayers that are suggesting that we should eliminate these buildings and try and salvage some value?
We won't salvage the value. You have committed to climate change and carbon cost issues, and yet you're not committing to them by demolishing, and you have to take a long-term view. These buildings have been emptied, they are not earthquake-prone, they have been emptied by yourselves for no particular reason. You have council scattered in silos and paying leases around the city, and that will continue unless you change the way in which you are progressing with this. I suggest you lie it on the table, have a look very carefully at the detailed submission that I have made in terms of demolition, and have a look at the carbon cost issues.
Thank you, Helene. Unfortunately, we have run out of time, but thank you very much for coming.
That's unfortunate.
And expressing your passion for this issue.
This is Greta who just, you know, interrupted a speech and said, "Are you listening?" I just thought I'd bring it.
All right. Thank you, thank you. Right, so now I'd like to invite up Janet Mason, who's speaking to us as an individual on council funding for heritage buildings.
I've got some more paper for you to have. All right.
The floor is yours. Would you like the one-minute hand?
Pardon?
Would you like my hand up when there's one minute to go?
I'm fine, thank you.
You're fine?
Yes. Good morning, everybody. I'm the owner of 200 Willis Street, which is the building on the corner of Willis and Guzni. We've completed our earthquake strengthening, but I wanted to just make submissions on just how difficult that was and how the fund from the council assisted such a lot. That's one thing, and I've just heard the discussion earlier about loans. So the other thing is making funding available to building owners. Now, I think everybody recognises that there is some public good in what we do, and I'd just like to start by clarifying this myth that somehow owners of heritage buildings turn up and purchase these buildings because we want to make a lot of money. I can tell you the complete opposite is true, because we have put this building on the market, and the people who want to purchase it with a lot of money, developers, the first question is, can we knock it down? So to make money out of this, you do have to knock it down. So the people who are there owning these buildings are not doing it for money. And just to talk about what happened with me, I couldn't get funding from a bank because it was too high-risk, right? So they said, well, what if you open it up and there are some Tanga Tafanua issues or some other issues? So it had high-risk written all over it, and the banks wouldn't fund, so we had to go to private lenders, and that was enormously expensive. So whilst the funding available from the council was helpful, I have to say a loan for the amount would have been much more helpful or some kind of underwriting system. So that's what happened to us. You can see here some pictures of the building and all the work that was done. So it was an asbestos roof, which in itself is very expensive, and these tiles were imported from England so that it looked like how it was originally. So the whole thing has been quite expensive, and I can say, living there and working there, that not a single day passes without somebody photographing that building. So the council should be very proud of these buildings that remain. There are high-story buildings going up everywhere, and I think we all know that history is very important and the preservation of history is really important. And I just got a call yesterday saying the council is proposing abolishing this fund, and I'd have to say that that would be a huge disservice to the public of this city because of what that has done. So the amount that we have had, we have been very grateful for, and it has been put to good use, but if there's a possibility that the council is looking at loans or some kind of underwriting, then that is what I would wholeheartedly recommend, because if I had had that, I wouldn't be facing a lifetime of an enormous mortgage and working my fingers to the bone.
So we have a couple of questions.
Yes.
So councillor Fitzsimons and then councillor Panna. Councillor Panna first.
Just to be clear, if you hadn't had this money, what would have been the consequence for you?
Well, it just would have been a lot more difficult and a lot more stressful, because before even embarking on the project, you know, you have to get engineers, and of course we had the asbestos issue, and it just gave some comfort that the project could get on the road.
I haven't had time to read all the document properly. How much was the strengthening project, are you able to say?
Yes, it was in excess of two million dollars, so an enormous contribution. And, you know, that, the purchase of these buildings, I can speak for myself, but I'm sure there are other historic building owners who buy these buildings for the love of history, for the love of the building, and certainly not for money. And as I said before, people photograph that building all the time, and of course, I'm sure many of us who genuinely love these buildings would be happy for others to go and view them or have some other kind of public aspect if that were part of the proposal of loans and/or additional funding.
Thank you.
Yeah, just, how much was the grant that you got from the Wellington City Council?
It was eighty-four thousand dollars.
And how much was the total cost of the work?
Two million.
Cool. And I was just gonna-
So can I just say, it seems small, but just going back to the loan point, because I had to go to private financiers just to even get in the door, I had to fork out seventy K just for the privilege of getting a large loan from a private person and paying exorbitant interest rates.
Fortunately, I think we have run out of time, but that has been really useful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd now like to invite up to the table Jennifer Lawless, who's speaking as an individual on our LTP. Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you. Hi, everybody. Can you hear me? Cool. Sorry, I haven't been in this room before. Thank you guys very much for giving me the opportunity to speak today, and sorry, I'm a little bit croaky. I have had a negative COVID test on Monday, but I have been crying this morning. So I'm here submitting not just for myself, but for my whole family, and most particularly for my brother Ben, who is the big boy in this photo. I keep this photo in my son's room so that he knows that he had an uncle that loved him very much. Ben can't be here today because ten years ago this January, he was killed by a careless driver in Koori when he was cycling home from cooking my birthday dinner, going to his house in Mount Cook. That night, I was worried about him, knowing that cycling in Wellington is dangerous, and he said, "Don't worry, you're so bossy, and I've got my lights." He was killed four hundred metres down the road. I know he would have been here today to submit to you if he could, because he loved politics and cycling and also local government and was generally a giant nerd. You have a choice today about how much investment is the right amount to put into cycling safety and infrastructure. There are four options on the table, but only one of them delivers the full program within ten years, which will have a cycling network that Ben would have taken that night from his house in Mount Cook to my house in Koori and back. I know this question has been framed to you in terms of cost and debt and rates and nice-to-haves and certainty and competing priorities. I know all of you feel the pressure of keeping rates down and being reelected and also doing the right thing. I also know that many of you in this room understand that the only real way to keep everybody safe on the roads is to build physically separate infrastructure. All drivers make mistakes. Safety isn't an individual matter, the power is in your hands to create systems that prevent injuries and death. I know this because I spoke to many of you at the time, I hugged you, I watched as you have put increased investment into Wellington cycling infrastructure over the last ten years, and for that I thank you. I'm sorry that the mayor has taken leave for this presentation, because in particular, I wrote with him and have his responses still, some heartfelt replies that he would do everything in his power, as some of you have also said to me, to make our road network safer. If only you had the agency and the support. My mother spoke to Andy yesterday, so I know that at least my family has communicated with him that they care about this option. I'm here to tell you today that you do have the agency and you have my support. You all know that Wellington City has a dismal record of keeping cyclists safe and alive. You will have seen the recently leaked Waka Kotahi report, and I've read the reports about that in the paper, thank you, stuff. If any of you in this room does what you know in your heart is right to create a full cycling network and you cop flack from it from anyone, I will stand by your side and I will explain to you why this isn't about rates or numbers or debt. why this isn't about rates or numbers or debt or even votes, but it's about protecting people like my brother Ben. Ben's funeral cost $12,000. So his death was really cheap compared to what you're putting into the investment today. The numbers there don't stack up. NZTA at the time estimated that the full cost of each road death was $4 million. Ben's death was also very expensive, so the numbers stack up. But I'm here to tell you that Ben's death was the worst thing that has ever happened to me and to my family in what was a hard life. We will never be able to explain to you the full cost of losing somebody in the dead of night on my birthday in a rainy road in Wellington. This little boy in the picture is my son. He lives in Koorori and he will be 12 this year. Ben in this picture was 22. This is the year that he died. In 10 years' time, this little boy, my son, will be 22. That's the end of the long term plan that you're riding on today. If he gets on his bike and he goes out the door at night and I want to go to bed, I need to be able to sleep knowing that you did everything that you could today to keep him safe and everybody else who goes by bike, please. A whole generation is a long time to wait for real change. Please be bold. Your decision today could protect another family from sitting here in 10 years' time holding a picture of somebody they may never see again. Thank you for your support.
Thank you, Jennifer. That's incredibly brave sharing that, but very moving. And I'm sure it will have an impact on, you know, most of us hearing that sort of thing. So thank you for coming.
Thank you. I appreciate the time to talk.
Thank you.
Kia ora.
Right, so last but not least, we have you, Maurice.
Thanks.
I will make sure that the mayor does know you came. I don't quite know why he's had to duck out, but we will communicate to him. So welcome, Maurice. And because you are an individual, you actually only have five minutes. You'll know how fast that goes. And if you want it to include questions, it needs to be accommodated within the time. The floor is yours.
All right, I'm watching the clock. And with respect, that was quite a hard one to follow. And I think we need to consider those issues. I'm here to speak on the heritage, the Built Heritage Fund, which I believe is under some threat, being deleted. It's often said that a society is judged by how it looks after its poor and its disabled. I think a city is judged by how it looks after its heritage. So the fund, which has been in place for some time, is a very important first step in owners of heritage building who are extremely disadvantaged because they can't demolish, they're very threatened by the earthquake standards and everything like that. They don't know what to do, but the first thing they have to do is to get an engineer's assessment of what they need to do and how to go about it. And with that assessment, possibly arrange funding and so forth like that. I've been on the Culture and Heritage Equip Fund, which was doling out $10 million as a committee member. I believe this fund, council's one, is about half a million. It's, they're both very, very important to maintaining the heritage. So I can't emphasise that much more. I heard earlier discussions from Helene about demolishing the MOB and the CAB, neither of whom I would consider very much heritage. Furthermore, I wouldn't even consider the library heritage or definitely not library heritage. And I know that doesn't go down well with you councillors of the board voted to maintain it. It's some huge phenomenal cost. But the little old building down Adelaide Road, the railway state, the railway, the railway inn, all of those essential components of the city are very, very important. And they're often owned by private owners. I can't speak personally because the scale of my jobs, which is a lot bigger, and I haven't ever availed myself of the council fund, but I will speak on behalf of many, many people who own these heritage people. The smaller buildings do ask my opinion what to do. And I'm gratified to see that the fund is there and it helps them from an engineering point of view. And speaking as an engineer as well, there are quite difficult questions and they're in very awkward positions, as the lady before earlier, of what they're facing. So it's, yeah, all I can ask is that you do consider to keep it. And it's a small fund in there, a fraction of what you're blowing on the library. So having got that dig in.
So Maurice, may I ask you a question? It's a quick one.
Yeah, go ahead.
You did mention you value, you think both funds are of value. So that's the Built Heritage Fund and the Building Resilience Fund?
The Equip Fund, yeah.
So, oh, okay.
No, that's the national one.
Okay, all right.
The Equip one is a government one, it's a main, central government one.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. I'll ask councillor Panet to explain that for me a little bit later too. Okay, thank you councillor Panet.
Thank you, Maurice. Look, as a very experienced developer and a structural engineer, can you just talk briefly about the costs that owners face, whether it's a heritage or a non-heritage building and retrofitting to make sure it's strong? Or even if it's a new building, just given our very, very high risk of earthquakes?
Oh, that's not fair, I know. I talked for hours on that subject. But it is a very, very difficult subject. And it's one very much confused by the fact that a lot of brick buildings or what we call unreinforced masonry buildings have withstood the test of time and been there for 100 years. And I mean, my other pet subject is St Gerard's. And people would say, well, how has that survived all the earthquakes? It just takes one earthquake of a particular direction, duration, frequency or period, as they call it, and it'll all come down. So the engineers who classify the buildings as earthquake prone, which then leads to huge headaches with the funding and insurance and everything like that. Technically, it's, I could go on for hours, but Wellington's in a very difficult position. And base isolation really isn't a solution to most of these smaller buildings or the older buildings. It's extremely expensive when you try and do it into an existing building as you found in the library. Not very sensible thing to do.
I think amongst other things we have got that, that's your view. Thank you. I think we've run out of time. As you said, we could have spent a lot longer on this. But I do thank you for coming, albeit briefly, to give us some of your thoughts. Thank you. So that does actually bring us to the end of our public participation. And I think we might break for morning tea. It's probably a good enough time. So we'll leave it, it'll be 10 minutes. So we'll be back here, please promptly at 25.2. Thank you.
So we will leave at twelve thirty promptly. There will be some lunches provided to us, which we have had discretion to decide how we manage that. But we will need to stop our meeting really promptly at half past twelve. We will be going to our special, very special event. And then we will reconvene here at three fifteen and I have checked those have no three fifteen. I have taken some advice. I have taken advice, so. Well, it's the advice I've been given from our staff who know, who I think do know. Look, if we are, we can be fifteen minutes late for that, but no later in that. But we also have a tight timeframe, so I'm sort of trying to keep everything right. So three fifteen has been decided. Sarah, can I just ask a question? All right, well, let's, would you, well, it was actually three fifteen, but we can maybe make a compromise there. Three thirty, okay, all right, that's been amended, okay, three thirty. Then we will come back and we will actually probably be seeing how we're going at that point in order to decide what further breaks we need. And the meeting is scheduled to go on to seven. And we are scheduled, if we don't finish today, to pick up again at nine thirty tomorrow. That's what's been scheduled. So just like, let's see how we go. We can make some further decisions when we see how we're going.
Sorry, Deputy Mayor, can I just clarify? So we're not going to stop at five thirty anymore because that was my understanding yesterday, which I'm going to change my arrangements.
Okay. If we stopped at five thirty, it might just be, you know, we'll see how we go. We can tentatively say five thirty for a break.
Sorry, sorry, that's actually.
I did try, I did try to find out.
Actually, I've got childcare.
Okay, we'll stop at five thirty then.
I just need to know so I can, yeah, if it's going to be for an hour.
For an hour.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine.
Go at five fifteen.
And then is it, sorry, can I just clarify? If we need, if we think we need more time, can we go into the evening, whatever time?
That is a possibility. So I will give you now the updated and discussed version. So we will leave at twelve thirty on the dot. We will reconvene at three thirty, hopefully on the dot. We will have a break from five thirty PM to six thirty PM. And we do have the ability to resolve to go further into the evening if it needs to be. Also, if that fails, we have a booking at nine thirty tomorrow to continue. So we're just going to have to play it by ear. I do hope we don't need to come back tomorrow, but you never know. And we also need to resolve now that we will actually potentially go on for longer than six hours. So I suggest that we agree to continue beyond the six hour limit in accordance with standing orders eleven point seven, seconded by the mayor. Would, is there any further discussion? I think we've had a healthy voicing of opinion, let's. Yeah, sure.
So this is the most critical paper we are dealing with for the tri-anim that we're in. And we just keep extending it and we haven't got a clear process going forward. So if you want to carry on for ten hours or whatever it's going to take to get where we're ever going to land, which I don't know whether we're actually going to get there properly, fairly. I'm not going to support us going beyond six hours, so I'll be voting against it.
Do we want to put a maximum time in the evening? Okay, right, well, in that case, we will put it to the vote as it stands. So we're now voting to continue, agree to continue beyond the six hour limit. And that's carried, okay, so I would now, I now.
Sarah, can I just, another point of clarification? If Andy's about to introduce it, I think the paper copy is not far away. Can we just, oh, great, I don't have one yet, oh, great, cool.
Okay, so I have been told that some people would like to ask officers questions. So we will have a time of questioning before I ask the mayor to introduce the paper. Move the, sorry, move the paper. You look surprised, Mayor Foster. Who wants to ask? Well, Cyrus has just told me now.
Andy, is it that you're surprised about the order or that we are questioning officers?
Do you?
Which part are you surprised by? Oh, no, I was just wondering because we could try and resolve to help you.
In actual fact, the C E hasn't advised me that it's probably more normal for the mayor to actually introduce it, then allow a space for questions and then we'll move into debate. Okay, sorry.
Okay, well, I'm going to start off by saying thank you. And I'm going to first of all say thank you to our staff who have done a phenomenal job under real time pressure. I think the time pressures for this budget process are actually greater than they normally are. Two reasons for that, difficult start at the front end. Obviously, we were affected by COVID in terms of our last, our last budget. But also I think that the audit processes, and I'm looking at officers to confirm because that's what they've said, the audit processes are becoming more onerous and taking longer. And I look back to see when we did the L T P last time in twenty eighteen. And we actually had the committee meeting in the first week of June, it was actually the sixth of June. But we'd been told now that the timeframes that we've got don't allow us to do that. And therefore we have to do things in a much tighter timeframe. So I think actually audit starts becoming, it's a help, but it also can start impacting on our ability, not just us, but I'm sure all councils to do their jobs. This is, what I wanted to do was start off by, so thank you for the offices. I wanted also to say thank you councillors for your hard work during the last few months, putting the, well, actually the whole process, putting together the budget and, you know, listening to people, engaging with submissions. And then also in the last week of actually sort of thinking about, hey, we've got a particular position. We want to, we want to do some work to try and amend that. So I'll come back to that shortly. And I also wanted to particularly thank all of our submitters to get nearly two thousand submissions. That is a significant number of submissions across a range of issues. Sometimes I think we've been as low as, I think, six hundred-ish. Other times we've been slightly higher, but it's a significant number of submissions. This, this budget is, if we take ourselves to the big picture, this budget is about addressing the things that our city needs us to do. It's about addressing the foundations of our city. It's about addressing our key infrastructure, our core infrastructure. And it is about making sure that our city is resilient going forward. So those things are encapsulated in the seven key issues, which I think were laid out really, really clearly for our community. And what was really good in that is we also gave our community genuine options. That's actually not been the case in the past. Normally what we've done is we've said, we propose X, do you like it or don't? This time we gave people genuine options to say, we like option one, two, three or four. And I think that that is a real strength and something we should continue to do. It does make it harder in terms of the, you know, the auditing process, I acknowledge that. But it is something that democratically is, I think is a real plus. We heard this morning from Colin Keating, who talked about a big rates increase. And look, I'm, you know, I'm always, that's something that really matters because I know that a lot of people struggle to pay the thing, the costs that we impose. However, when we went out to our community and we asked them both in terms of our submissions and our survey, the strong feedback was actually council, you are broadly on the right track. We need to invest in our city. So the first one of those things, of course, we have is the investment in our, our pipe infrastructure, taking on board the laterals and the sludge treatment. And so we are, we are addressing a, a long-term legacy of underinvestment. We are, for the first time ever, fully funding, not merely depreciation, but fully funding renewals in our water assets. And people will start seeing that happening, the fact that, well, obviously we're going to be closing Jewboys Key. I know that's a replacement of a pipe very shortly, but that is to get on and do a piece of work. We've got a piece of work which is going on in Bowen Street, Whitmore Street, which has been done. And we're going to have a plan for wastewater, which we've already showed for the central city. We are going to be getting on with doing the job that needs to be done to make sure that our pipe network is resilient and fit for the future. Sludge treatment, we all know that that is necessary because if we are going to stop sticking things into the landfill and keeping our landfill expanding, we have to get, deal with sludge. And so we have a process which we are going forward to deal with that. Those are long-term legacy issues, they both happen to land at the same time. We're also dealing with the long-term legacy issues around Tanaka Civic Square and our library. And our community, again, as I said, broadly speaking, you're on the right track. We do have the opportunity of making some savings in the library. We'll see what happens with the, the work on viscous dampers. It'd be very interesting to see if that can actually save us money and still deliver a good outcome. And we're also delivering on the long-term issues around climate change. So we are fully funding Tiatakura. And we also, with cycling, we obviously had a, you know, bit of a disconnect in terms of the, the survey and the, and the, the community feedback in terms of submissions. The only issue we will face councillors is what is the decision you're going to make about how fast and how much? It's not that we're not, it's not that we're not going to be investing a huge amount of cycling. We will invest a lot, it's just a decision that we will make politically in the next few hours about how much and how fast. And we should be continuing to invest. And actually, it was interesting, I, I look back at, I've been reminded of how much we invested in cycling when we first started on this journey and it was two thousand and eight, the first cycling policy we ever had. I think our, our investment, almost sixty five thousand dollars a year. If we go for the full shebang or even what I'm proposing here, we'll be investing almost that much a day. That is how much we've accelerated the, the investment in, in cycling infrastructure. Overall, this is the biggest package of investment that the council has ever made. It's the biggest capital program we've ever made. People have encouraged us to borrow, to use the low interest rates, and that is effectively, that is what we're doing. We are, there were some comments made, I'm going to go back to Tanaka Civic Square about, to respond to my former colleague Helen Ritchie, who's talked about us failing to manage this resource. In fact, I think we're doing the opposite. We are aiming to manage this resource. We have in Tanaka Civic Square, one building which is broken. It's damaged by an earthquake and the clear advice we've got from our staff is that you could spend a very large amount of money fixing it, but you would not have a resilient building. That is not a smart investment. Similar investment, similar proposition with the municipal office building is again, you could invest eighty plus million dollars and still not have either a good building or a resilient building. And we have said as a councillor, actually, we think that it is a better way to move forward. And our community thinks it is a better way to move forward to actually take those buildings down and to replace them with fit-for-purpose, resilient buildings. And what we're doing at the moment is we're engaging with our community on a framework to guide the redevelopment of Tanaka Civic Square so that our community gets what it wants and something which it can be immensely proud of. And actually, it's a much better space than what we've got and what we've had in the past. We also have responded to a significant number of other issues. And particularly I wanted to, the budget includes all the businesses usual. We are fully funding depreciation across the, the range of all of our assets. So, you know, the parks and gardens, et cetera, assets and so on. And I wanted to pick one particular one, particularly because we heard from Meg and team this morning, which is the investment in venues. So there are some things which are not in this budget, which were in the budget three years ago. I'm going to pick the three which are not in there. There is no runway extension, there is no big arena, a contribution to a big arena. And there is nothing there for the, for a marine education centre because that seems to be going nowhere. And it's interesting to see that the Napier Aquarium doesn't look as though that's going to go anywhere either, unfortunately. But we are proposing to invest north of forty million dollars in upgrading our venues, the Opera House, the T S B, the Michael Fowler Centre. And also you've heard about the warehouse proposal for Tefai, which I think is a very, very exciting proposal. And at a very modest cost is going to fill that gap that we've talked about for many years in that sort of five hundred, six hundred to a thousand seat venue. And I think that that will be great for our arts and culture sector. Now, I wanted to talk through, because there's been, I know there's been a bit of a, you know, concern about the, the process that we've been through. We all got the paper on Friday night. I was asked at that stage over the weekend, you know, is this what you propose? I said, look, this at this stage is officer recommendations. By the time we get to Thursday, we will have a recommendation which I'm supporting and putting forward. And I said that I was going to be listening to our community, I was going to be listening to officers and I was going to be listening to you councillors. And so we had a good meeting on Tuesday. And what you said, every single one of you, is you weren't comfortable with basically sixteen percent. You said you want to get down to thirteen and a half. And you came up with some very good creative ideas and councillor Fitzsimons in particular, I think, came up with some good creative ideas about how we could get ourselves down to that thirteen and a half. And that, those things are encapsulated in the recommendations which you see before us. So if I walk through some of the recommendations that are there, and essentially what I've done, everything that's in black was in the officer substantive. It's only the bits in red where I've made any changes at all. And so the first one of those, obviously, is the cycle A one, look, you can take or leave that. My concern about the option three as it was, when I finally got my head around it properly, was that we weren't doing enough in the first three years. And so talking with officers yesterday, it's how can we accelerate that rollout? And that's what you see there, the deliver a rapid rollout, and that's ten two, which is to say, we want to get on with doing stuff and we want to get on with doing stuff straight away. Essentially, the difference between this and the option four is only the latter years. And it's those low, the ones that officers described as the relatively low value ones, mostly, you know, sort of around the recreational routes around bays and things of that nature. I accept that whatever we decide is going to be a democratic decision. And I would suggest to you, if you want to go for option four, don't debate that particular one. Stick option four on the table, have a debate about that, I know, and you're done. The twelve is about the bulk water charges, which I've talked to you on several occasions. I don't think any of us, that was Wellington City Council, Uppahut City Council, Hut City Council, Porirua City Council, none of us were pleased to get a late, well, in our view, a late addition to our budget in terms of an extra levy on bulk water. And I've spoken strongly with regional council, we, we met with them earlier this week and I spoke to Darren over the weekend as well, to say, look, we need, we need to fix this. Because at the moment, the difference between the way they manage it and the way that we manage it, we depreciate assets over their life. They effectively pay them off over the life of the loan against those assets. And that means that you might be paying off the entire upgrade of Temaru, which I think they're going to be doing over twenty five, thirty years, which means generations from thirty years out to a hundred years, which it might be a hundred year lifespan, effectively get it for free, but we pay it all upfront. That is not great and that's, that's one of. That is not great, and that's one of the things which we're seeing in our bulk water levy. We're overpaying at the moment. So 12 is about saying, we want, sending a clear signal that we, as the four cities, want to engage with them over that. In terms of the next amendments, all I've done with A through, the little 13, A through to little V, is to put those things as individual items so that nobody has to amend anything. It's trying to make it more efficient, so you don't have to go and say, oh, for example, councillor Pannett, I want to move an amendment to put back BIF. What you do is, if you want to put back BIF, you say, effectively, I'm going to vote down the removal of BIF, S, and I'm going to vote down the removal of resilience fund. So if those are passed, that money comes out. If they fail, that money stays in. That's the way that would work. So it just saves some amendments, just to be more efficient. Terms of Paniki Promise, as I said, I would, I met with officers yesterday to say, how would you fund that? Some of that is to be funded through the City Recovery Fund. And that is what's reflected in the recommendations in front of you, which helps pull the rates down a little bit this year. And councillor Conde, in particular, thank you for pointing out that, in fact, I'd missed the Ahutini, the venues one. That can also be funded through the City Recovery Fund in this coming year. And I've got to say, that, just in terms of some of those things which are there, because we did get a bit of flack from people about, you know, why has the budget gone up? It's gone up because we're responding to a number of key things that our city has wanted. And that is particularly in the area of the Paniki Promise, to keep our city safer. It's particularly in the area of responding to youth and the arts and culture sector. And I particularly do want to pick on the venues access. That has been something which our arts sector has been asking for, for years. And we are now putting that in there and saying, we're going to fund that to make our venues more accessible for arts and culture activities, which will add value and vibrancy to our city. So I think that is a really good response. Because what we're doing there is we're responding to two other parallel engagements. We went out with Ahutini, and we went out with our children and young people's strategy at the same time, with the deliberate intent that we might then fund something in this LTP. So that's what we're doing right here. And the final one to pick up on, or two things there. There's an increase in grants funding CPI, that's one of the things councillor Fitzsimons, you want. And then you can either vote that up or down. I would say that the effect of the way in which we're going to fund both the community harm reduction and the Take 10 actually adds more money to the grants pool, effectively, because it takes those things away from being a burden on the grants pool. Has the effect, I'm told, in the first year about 150K. So you've got essentially a potential double whammy or double benefit there. Final thing to mention is that the recommendations, if you go back to the recommendation nine, which says we agree the recommended funding options, so that means we're taking the recommended options on bulk water, the recommendations on laterals, et cetera. It's also saying we're taking the recommended officer recommendations on parking. So that's in there. However, there is an amendment which is the coupon parking one. So Q would mean that instead of going to $15, which is what you've got in, if you vote for that, instead of going to $15, which is what you've got in nine, you would then say, actually, we're happy with 18. Does that make sense? So you've got a choice, that if you vote that down, we're at 15. If you vote for it, we're at 18. Okay? And then the other one, look, I've got some wording around the Chinese garden, just to, and 15, just to confirm, we are committed to that. It was suggested, actually, we probably ought to put the word phalay in there as well, just to, you know, so we... Phalay Malai, yep. But I think, Laurie, you've got some wording on that. So, look, I'm pretty relaxed either way as to how you deal with that. But I wanted to put it in there, just as a signal to say, we are committed to the Chinese garden. There are some issues around Frankitts Park, which officers are working on. We have a phalay malai proposal, which, you know, we have had in the public arena, so we can talk about that now. And we will get more information on all of those things shortly. And then we will be able to make some decisions in future budgets. So I'm pleased to move that. I know it's complicated, but it's actually possibly not as complex as people think.
Thank you. Now, before you formally move that, and I am planning to second it, we will actually have time for questions. So I have a list. First up on the list is councillor Fitzsimons, followed by councillor Day, I see councillor Young, councillor Pannett, and councillor Foon. But councillor Fitzsimons.
Yeah, I've got a few, some to Andy, some to officers. But the first one is to Andy, what rates increase are you proposing?
Is this fair enough to have, okay, good, just process, yep.
My desire is to get us back to where we were.
13.5, yeah.
13.5, yeah. And I think what will be useful, though, as we go through, and you're going to have to add things up a little bit ago, you know, if you vote for everything and take the savings out, then we're not going to get there.
And that's my question, is how do you propose to do that? Do you want to have, are you going to have a running total with a spreadsheet on the screen?
I think we should.
Because otherwise, people don't know what they're voting for. Cool. And I've got a question just about the bulk water charges. Isn't the price just the price? And will the auditors really allow us to do this kind of approach, which is basically to try and steer down Greater Wellington? It's probably a question for Sarah.
The first part of them is meaning of the motion.
So I think that is best asked, oh, okay.
Yeah, the first part is the meaning of the motion, which is, we've got the bill. Officers have given us some advice that they don't believe the whole bill will be there because they don't think, you know, they can give you that advice in a moment. But what it is, is saying, moving forward, it's a signal that says, we want to talk to you.
I get it's a negotiating position, but these are accounts that need to be audited. Will, okay.
So it's not a bill yet. At the beginning of the year, they provide us with an estimate of what they think the final year actual costs will be. And that's based on a mixture of forecast consumption, but also some of their costs, like a capital programme. Each year consistently, in the past five years, what they've billed us as actials at the end of the year are about 3% to 4% lower than what the estimate was at the beginning of the year.
So you're comfortable with this approach?
Comfortable that we've budgeted an estimate slightly lower than what they've provided.
Okay, cool. And my other question, I've got a number of questions about the cycleway option you're proposing, Andy. And I guess there's a few of them, and some of them might be for you, some of them might be for officers. But perhaps if I start with you, Andy, you're talking about low-cost cycleways, starting with the southern connections, for $40 million. Can you just unpack what you're proposing there?
I sat down and worked with Vita and Alison yesterday.
This is this meeting that Sean Rush was at, is it?
No.
No, okay, so it's another one.
They may have had conversations with others as well, I suspect they probably have.
No, not me.
That is their proposition, and I'm happy to endorse that.
Yeah, I don't understand this at all.
Probably best if somebody else...
Okay, so I think that possibly needs officer advice. Yeah, Liam, sorry, Mr. Hodgets is coming. And can I just please ask, since this is a formal meeting, that we do address each other as councillor? I will try to remember as well.
Thanks, Madam Chair. And I'm just going to call Vita up as well to answer some of the details. But primarily, councillors, the effort of officers here has been, one, to articulate some of the councillors' concerns over the last few days in these amendments, if you like. So really, what the connection for a rapid rollout programme relates to is mostly focused on the southern connections in the city, but more importantly, safety improvements as well. So over the period of days and indeed weeks leading up to this, safety's been a huge concern in the north-south spine of the city. And this amended recommendation from the mayor tries to address that.
Yes, I really want to unpack this, southern connections, because I'll tell you what my experience is, and then I'll ask a question about it, because it's sort of relevant. So Wellington City Council put out a proposal for cycleways to go along Adelaide Road and through Beer and Poor, taking out all the parking on either sides of the shops and loads of parks, 150 parks, I think, along Adelaide Road. The businesses in Beer and Poor were furious about this. We had a meeting with the chief city planner and the chief executive, the mayor, David Lee and I. And within about five minutes of one business owner objecting to it, the chief executive and the city planner gave them an assurance it wouldn't happen. Now, my question is, what kind of commitment is there that this is actually going to happen? It's actually deliverable? It feels like if one business owner was able to do that, and I admit that people are different now, to that chief executive and that city planner, why is it different now?
Through you, Madam Chair. Well, there's no detail necessarily to this proposal at the moment. I wasn't in the meeting you're referring to, I'm sure it was several years ago. But the officers have made a recommendation in the past. Their recommendation hasn't gone through. Within this particular instance, the mayor is putting this forward. Officers believe it's achievable and will follow due process, which of course includes traffic resolutions. And that requires public consultation.
So my other question is, when we were advocating for, oh, yeah.
I think this is about a funding envelope, it's not about the design of a particular route or anything of that nature.
Well, it has southern connections in years one to three.
There are many ways in which I'm sure you can do southern connections, so it was about the funding envelope, rather than...
Look, Mr. Hodgets, this morning we discussed the process that we would go through with the council, funding envelope first, and then detailed planning, which would come back to the council. Can you just articulate that?
Through you, Madam Chair. You see the first recommendation refers to the cycleways masterplan, so it's already highlighted there that we'll be reprioritising that, that's the key point. And that reprioritisation will be done with council. The other aspect to it, of course, is the element of achievability. And the only way we can do that is some detailed planning. And this proposal will bring forward a lot of detailed planning in year one. And that planning will involve community consultation and work with councillors on what those preferred options would look like.
I mean, my next question really is that when myself and other councillors wanted to put out option four for consultation as the preferred option, we got strong advice from officers, which was backed up in a presentation just this week, that the labour market didn't exist for the deliverability of that, and you shouldn't have it as a preferred option. So why is that different now? All of a sudden, the advice to me seems to have changed to say, oh, no, now we like this, and you should do this, and you should do it quickly.
Through you, Madam Chair. So I can see how you can view it that way, councillor. But this particular proposal relates to a rapid rollout programme with its temporary, safety, and cycleway improvements. And that won't, according to advice from the engineering team, and we provided that yesterday, sorry, on Tuesday, that won't demonstrably impact on the infrastructure bandwidth issue that we discussed.
I've got more questions.
Yes, but I think there are some others as well, so if I...
Can I just, there's not many more. The next one really, I mean, I'm still not clear about quite what that means in the labour market issues. It feels to me like we were getting a hard sell on option four. But anyway, I'll move on to Island Bay. So, an option four, which I supported, and I proposed the inclusion of Island Bay at 14 million in that option in order to sort out Island Bay so that we can rebuild our social licence, what is happening in the mayor's proposal around the Island Bay cycleway? So is it option four? Is it done before the southern connections temporary works? What is left of the funding envelope, within the envelope of this budget, that you could possibly spend on Island Bay and when?
So 0.5, you can see instruct officers to report back with design and cost options for Island Bay by September 2021 to be included within the envelope of this budget. So that is saying that this is not making a decision about that, but within the larger envelope, we will get back to you.
Yeah, I want to know how much is in that envelope? 6 million or 14 million or more, or somewhere in between?
So it's not defined in this budget envelope. It's more the cycleways generally, and then we'll come back with options in September. And you can decide if it is X, Y, or Z at that point.
Can I ask a question at this point of clarification? Are you finished? Yes, I'm just going to see if Flew is finished.
I want to understand why officers think that rapid rollout and temporary cycleways is better than community consultation towards a cycling network delivered under option four, particularly given that previously, they supported option three. I just do not understand how, it's illogical to me that you could move from vehemently opposing option four to promoting this. I just don't get it. Something is not adding up for me.
Can I please make a comment? I think what we're doing here is trying to listen to a view of a number of elected members about their desire to see a faster rollout of cycleways, and to come up with a proposition that might achieve that, avoiding the infrastructure build, supply, and construction issue that we've clearly explained to you. So this is actually an effort on the part of the officers to listen to your concerns and to be creative in the way you might achieve a higher level of rollout of cycleways. So the choices are actually to look at the proposals as they exist, option three or option four, or to think of a variation on the way you can have an equivalent of option four with a completely different kind of approach, which is more creative, fast, and more temporary. It explores, you learn through the process. And further on down the track, you may then have the ability to build the wider infrastructure, the more permanent infrastructure around it. Am I correct in here?
I think I get it now. So you're saying that temporary cycleways use less labour. So you weren't worried about the labour market implications of temporary cycleways, but you were of permanent ones. Is that the point?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, got it.
And Flew, can I also just highlight, because I don't know, I'm presuming, Tam, yours is the amendment which is there for the option four? Yes. And that amendment includes exactly the same concept, the 52 million, which is the 40 plus the 12, which is there. So the same rapid rollout concept is there. So whether you vote for this, or you vote for the option four, you're getting the same thing, effectively.
Oh, that's good. And I probably have had my question of clarification answered through the CEO. So councillor Day.
So my question is about number 15. And it does feel a little bit like deja vu, Mayor Foster. With your recommendation here, you're kind of pulling the Chinese garden away from Frankitts Park by saying that we support one in Wellington. I'm just wondering if you've talked with the Chinese garden community, because, so it should say Frankitts Park.
So you want to change that a little bit?
What I would suggest to you, because I think Laurie's going to move an amendment anyway, so assuming Laurie's amendment passes, I want to give my signal, my personal signal about support for the Chinese garden. So that's why I put that in there, knowing that Laurie's amendment was going to be there.
So you're saying you're supporting the Chinese garden at Frankitts Park?
I'm assuming that Laurie is going to move an amendment which will have that in there, and that will replace what I've got.
So you're saying, but I want to confirm, because in 15, you're opening it up again, and their submission to us was very clear, when Ming Foon, the race relations commissioner, came and spoke to us, he said, please don't try and move us around the city again. So I really, I think it's really important that you're clear, that you support it being at Frankitts Park.
Sorry, it does say Frankitts Park in sight, but I understand what you're saying.
At the beginning, because you just say you support it in Wellington. So Frankitts Park would be your preference? Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. Councillor Young.
So this is a question for the mayor. Just, you mentioned you'd have various conversations with councillors. So less than 48 hours ago, we had a conversation in the car park when you expressed your opposition to any reinstatement of funding for the Chinese garden, and described the proposal of doing so as a sop to the Chinese community, because the garden would never eventuate. So what has happened since then?
No, that's not quite what I said, councillor. What I said is that 6.5 is not going to deliver. So there's a point at which we actually need to put a serious piece of money in there, which is, you know, at the moment, we've been told it's about 40 million. And that's the point, and that's the conversation. That's what that is highlighting there, which is saying, we need more information, we need a real price.
But you did say, I mean, like...
I think it makes people feel good to put 6.5 in because it doesn't deliver it.
But you described that as a sop.
Well, I think that was...
I actually think that's just not helpful. So let's move on.
So does number 15 reinstate the funding then?
Councillor Young, I don't think this is particularly helpful.
Okay. Okay, I think we will move on, actually. Councillor Pannett.
Here, a question for the mayor and officers, unsurprisingly, on BIF and BRF. Mayor Foster, did you seek any advice from officers? And I'm talking about the full implications around our earthquake response on these two funds.
Councillor, I was merely responding to the propositions which were put up when we met on Tuesday. That proposition was put in there, and it gives you the opportunity to either vote for it or against it. And it saves somebody moving an amendment, because otherwise, I suspect there would have been an amendment which would have come up to take it out. It just means that we don't have to have a separate debate about an amendment.
Thank you. So, Mr. Hodgets, this will be the first time that we have had any advice at all on these two funds. Could I just ask a few questions?
The Grants Committee had advice.
Talking across the table, thanks.
And with due respect, the Grants Committee does not have the delegations to make some of the decisions that we are making today, and we did not get advice. So, Mr. Hodgets, I would just like to, first of all, there's 113 listed heritage buildings which have to be strengthened by 2027. Do you think it is realistic that all that work will be done in less than, well, six and a half years?
Through you, Madam Chair. Through you, Madam Chair, I think Tom Williams and I will try to answer that because we've got two aspects to this, I look after the heritage component. Look, without question, there are some concerns in the heritage team about how quickly we're going to be able to get on top of these earthquake-prone heritage buildings. But as I have indicated earlier, the current regulatory regime has a sunset that's happening for these buildings. And we have a programme of works that includes BIF that allows heritage-prone, earthquake-prone buildings to get access to support and information.
So do you think it will be done, like, without BIF's support? And can it be done, also just given we've heard all about the infrastructure capacity issues?
Through you, Madam Chair, there's lots of ways we can achieve this. And BIF at the moment is a piece of policy and funding tool available to council to ensure that we do our best efforts to retain some of those heritage class buildings, but it's certainly not the only.
But the money's being removed, so what else will you do if, under this amendment?
Well, that's a council decision and when that decision's made, we'll look to pivot and try to resource as much as possible that service.
Thank you. Mr. Williams, you sent some information from GNS about the risks of earthquakes in the city. I'll refer to them when I speak. Has that information changed, for example, about the 50% chance of the Alpine Fault rupturing causing a magnitude eight seismic event?
I believe that's still correct, yeah.
Yeah, and unfortunately I wasn't able to secure a scientist to come along today because it was too short notice. So what is the loss of life projected for all of those events?
I don't have that information to hand, councillor, but I believe when we presented the last MUSP, we did give that information on the likely fatality rate and that's still valid. I can go and get that information, but I don't have it on.
Yeah, it's a little bit late. And I presume you've got no objection to providing this formal advice, which I will be seeking for a paper in the future about our response to earthquakes?
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay, thank you very much.
Can I just point out that, you know, that the staff couldn't have had any prior knowledge of the fact that a councillor was going to suggest removing it? So, yeah. Okay, right, oh, okay. Okay, and Grants Subcommittee also isn't committee of the whole, so it has been quite useful for us all to be able to hear this. So moving on, councillor Foon.
My question's been answered, thank you.
Well, do we have any other questions then? Right, councillor Calvert.
Thank you, and these are probably to the mayor, because on your amendment number 10 in red, number three, so instruct officers to build back better where possible. Do they not do that already? Is that right, they don't do that already? Do we have to instruct them to do?
Can we have officer advice on that, please? I think, yes, just to explain the philosophy behind this.
Well, I just don't understand, are we saying that?
Mr. Hodges.
Through you, Madam Chair, this is, and I apologise, officer jargon for doing things better. So we have got an internal working group where our transport and planning teams are meeting regularly to talk capital works programmes and seeing opportunities that emerge from time to time in the city where we can do and optimise capital works in the public realm. The other interesting piece of work here is our Forward Works planning software and website, where accessing the power companies and the water networks and sewer networks to understand those agencies and including NZTA, including Waka Kotahie, those agencies' rollout of their capital programme to ensure that when they're out in the ground, we're out there with them, building back better. So apologies for the terminology.
I would add to that, that we intend to kind of showcase that, the next MUSP we're bringing in to show the integrated approach with our partners.
So is this build back better almost something that should be in quotation marks? Is this a theme? Okay, and what is concerning, what is the 12 million, is that extra money going in into the proposed budget? Or is that already there?
Through you, Madam Chair, so that's been brought forward in that option proposed by the mayor and it's to complement any of those opportunities that might emerge.
So when you say brought forward, where was that money already? Okay. Option Four what? Option Four what? For cycleways? So could.
If we can just limit the conversation across the table.
I'm just trying to understand.
Which is what I said when I introduced the paper, that this is bringing some forward that if you did what Tam is proposing, it will be there anyway. It's just the only difference really is the, excuse me, is very much the out years of some of the round the bays type stuff.
Okay, and just the, just the next one, instruct officers to work with Greater Wellington, ensure that the public transport network works with rapid rollout. Would we not do that already? I just wonder whether we're just telling our officers how to suck eggs, almost.
Through you, Madam Chair, the councillor's correct, so we do that anyway. But in officers drafting this, the request was that we were very specific that we would be working closely with Greater Wellington Regional Council on the bus network.
The words are officers, so they want to teach themselves.
So, and if I can respond to that, I actually asked for that to be included because I think the public, you know, need to know that this will be happening, even if we know it's going to happen.
And just the next one, re Island Bay, to be included within the envelope of this budget. So when you talk this budget, what's this budget? Is this the, is this the $500 billion budget or is this, what budget is this?
This is the Option Three, except as amended by doing the bits which are in there. So it's getting, yeah, it's getting closer towards Option Four, but without those round the bays ones.
And my next question under clause 13G, Purniki Promise, funding for Take 10, that's been put in the, it's been taken from the City Recovery Fund, which is why you've got it nil here, is that right? Okay.
That is again on officer advice.
All right.
Is that it from you, councillor Calvert?
Yeah, just in terms of these, have we engaged? Because a lot of this is coming from the City Recovery Fund and it's coming from our commercial business ratepayers. Have we engaged with any of those to seek their feedback on that?
The advice, I know that the advice has been taken from Kerry Rasmussen, who manages the fund, and she was comfortable with that.
Yeah, but we actually had heard from many of us, our commercial stakeholders, given that it's their money, their downtown levy that's going into.
So we have Ms. Richardson coming to give us some advice.
Councillor Calvert, the Purniki Promise, as you know, is a partnership that involves a number of people across the city, including our hospitality industry and our businesses. So the project itself has been a partnership involving those partners.
I might also say it was very good to hear Paul Retamanu on the radio earlier this week saying this is great. So while that is only one business operator, he is part of that group.
Okay, I am wondering if we should move on. So councillor Pennup, process question, and then councillor Rush.
Thank you, and apologies because I was just waiting to see where all of this lay. So if I want to foreshadow a slight amendment, which is that we do more work on the best response for around earthquake response, do I do that step before we vote on removing it or not? Sorry, so don't say it publicly, yeah.
Through the chair, it's an amendment, so when the motion is on the table, when Mayor Foster has seconded and depending if I second it, you can move your motion and speak to them.
Okay, and just in terms of the order, mine one would be debated first?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, or whoever, whichever the order is.
Debate will happen.
By the colleagues have amendments, okay, thank you.
Right, councillor Rush, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, one for officers. As I understand it, the Island Bay Resin Association, the new one, wrote to the CEO and to NZTA seeking to have their parade reinstated to how it was. Is that an option that could be pursued under this long-term plan?
So that's not currently an option within Option Three or Four within the LTP. Equally, it's not something we've considered or indeed costed, so we can't really tell you the cost implications of that, so this juncture is not an option.
Good, through you, Chair, I can add that that particular question was considered by the council in the last triennium and the view was that that was not a safe option.
And if I can add to that, my understanding is an actual fact, it wouldn't be approved by NZTA because the current, yeah, the road safety standards have changed since that was considered as an option right back when we first did Island Bay. I'll just go back to my list, have you got further questions, councillor Rush? No, okay. In that case, I still have one from councillor Calvert and then we can maybe move on.
Actually, another question for the mayor here. Just in the papers on Thursday, Friday, released on Friday evening, there was a plan to remove the parking, excessive parking increases for weekend parking which was going from $2.50 to $4.50. Reading your amendments, you're still, you are supporting that weekend parking does go up to $4.50 now?
No, no, that's why specifically, that's why I specifically said that when I spoke. So if you look at recommendation, recommendation nine, agree the recommended funding options for inclusion in the final LTP for the seven key issues and parking fees as outlined in attachment two. So attachment two of the original paper said parking fees $3, not $4.50 for the weekend.
Well, it's all really confusing because I'm not.
So I've just given you the clear answer. So the clear answer is as per attachment two, officers' recommendation in attachment two is $3, i.e. it's going up from $2.50 to $3, but not to $4.50.
I know, I'm probably, I'm probably not intelligent enough to understand this. But the thing is, I'm looking at the spread, I'm looking at this table here and I'm just trying to understand where we are getting, how we can guarantee that we are looking at a 3.5%, sorry, a 13.5%.
So if I can try and be helpful, would it be the case that if that wanted to be changed, someone else is going to have to move an amendment, bring it back up to $4.50?
Well, I'm just trying to understand what is actually going to be in the substantive and that was quite a key issue. And it was actually, it was actually in the previous table.
We have Ms. Hay here to provide some answers.
Through you, Madam Chair, the mayor's amendment includes for parking what the officers recommended in the paper on Friday night, which was $3. And he is amending the recommendation to go down to 15, up to 18 for coupon.
I think in the mayor's amendments changes the officers' advice about the $3 weekend parking. But I do think there will be somebody else around the table who will bring that at some point, a change. But you don't have to vote for it. All right, so I think that being the case, shall we move on to moving the paper? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You've moved it and I will second it and reserve my right to speak. Now, we will open up to debate and I actually do have a list which has come to me already. Yes, so what I'm going to do is, I've had signals that, I'm taking a speaking order. I've already had Tam text me to say she'd like to speak and Laurie indicate she would like to speak. And after that, I'm happy to take a speaking order. So, sorry, I knew I was going to slip up at some point. Councillor Paul.
That's all good.
And councillor Foon.
Anyway, don't worry, just keep going, let's be efficient.
All right, cool, all right, let's get on with it. Could I please have my amendments up on the screen? Cool, tena tato, so I'll speak to the substantive later on. So essentially, the big part of my amendments that I'm bringing forward is to, for us to adopt Option Four for cycleways, so full investment into cycleways over the next decade as opposed to Option 3.5. But I do want to acknowledge all the work that you and officers have put into making them both really good options. So I really want to thank all of the officers that have worked with us on this, on both of those options. But I want to give a really special thank you to Jennifer Lawless, who spoke to us this morning. I didn't see a dry eye in the room and I think it really grounded us in the decision that we are making today. And like you say, this is not just about rates, this is not just about borrowing, it's not just about some of those things, this is actually about human life that we're talking about. So I don't have a lot more to say, to be honest. Essentially, the reason that councillor Day and I are putting this forward again is obviously we believe in this ko papa, it's something that we support. And we put this amendment forward on the 18th of February, which was unsuccessful. And that was really hard to swallow because I know that this is essential to us reaching our climate targets for the city and particularly bringing forward that $52 million worth of capex so that we can immediately implement a cohesive, even if temporary, cycleway across the city to accommodate the thousands of people who are continuing to jump on their bike more and more each day. I want to acknowledge the 68% of people who submitted on our long-term plan and supported Option Four and really this is acknowledging their feedback and what they want. And I guess the big thing for me is the rapid rollout and it is acknowledging that the way that our roads are currently configured, that they bring forward a lot of potential for human error, whether that is, you know, the drivers or the cyclists. This is about taking out that chance and making sure that people can get home safely at night and get to work safely. The other thing I think that's important around this is that it will free up the footpaths for pedestrians and for mobility users and for prams and for families and for children who want to be safe on the footpaths by shifting e-scooters into these cycle lanes as well. So it's not just about bikes, it's about new forms of transport as we move into this climate transition and the different ways that particularly young people, but all sorts of people will now start moving around. So again, those e-scooters. So there's that. I also, we've got restoring those footpath upgrades that were deferred into the later years in the 18th of February meeting, so that needs to happen now. We've heard this year extensively about the struggles of how inadequate our footpaths are in Wellington, particularly for disabled people and for families who are pushing prams. 26, that is, I won't be moving that anymore, so that can just be struck out, the unscheduled infrastructure renewals upon advice from officers, because I listen, thank you. And the other one was that I will be incorporating the upgrades for Berenpor and Island Bay town centres. So now calling on councillor Day to second and looking forward to the debate.
Councillor Paul, so councillor Day, would you like to speak now?
Yes, yeah, we're just waiting for the town centre upgrade to come in. So I too would like to thank the submitters and acknowledge that a lot of people came and shared some really tough experiences that they've had. I actually had an experience last night where I was here until it was dark and I'd biked in and I text my husband saying I'm going to be a bit late home and he texts me back within a few seconds saying I'm coming to pick you up because he didn't want me biking home because Middleton Road is dangerous even when it's light, but in the dark it is a bit of a death trap. So I think it's really important that we send a strong signal to the community, to our contracting companies out there, that we're serious about delivering cycleways and they can gear up to come and help us with that. We need to, we need to be thinking about our future. So we've heard recently that the future is watching and we've heard some amazing submissions about creating a kids' freedom network in Wellington City where our kids can get round by bike and do so safely. And obviously, the upside of that is that adults can get round safely too. I think it's important that we address Island Bay. So the last one there around Island Bay and having the cost, the budget at the full amount if needed is really important. Having sat through many debates about Island Bay and watched how it has unfolded, it's really important that we put it right. It is a community lot and we need to prove that we can listen. So we can go through a process, we can listen and we can learn. I do support trying to accelerate some of the things that we do, but what we need to do when we do that is to take the things that we've learnt with us. And I think, you know, we have shown that we're doing that and I really want to acknowledge the amazing mahi that the staff are doing at the moment to try out some new things and talk to the community.
and talk to the community, take feedback and adapt and adopt new ways of doing things. So I think that's really exciting to see and, but yeah, I do think, I know that everyone has, you know, maybe a slightly different perspective on Island Bay and how much it's going to cost. I can always guarantee that it's going to cost slightly more than we anticipate and seeing the, the information that we saw earlier in the week. You can see we've got range, bands of pricing options that makes it a little bit hard at this point without more detail to know exactly what it will be. And the last thing we want is to have only budgeted $6 million and we find out it's going to be eight and then we've left ourselves short. I don't know what it's going to be, but I hope that whatever it is, it's going to be a super cycleway for people, but also create safe walking within that and also obviously for our drivers making it. Because it is hard, as was acknowledged by our amazing submitter this morning. You know, motorists do make mistakes and it's hard when you're constantly being put in line with people who are moving in different ways. So I think it's really important that we don't put all of the responsibility for trying to make sure that cyclists are safe on people who are driving their cars who might be dealing with a whole lot of other things, particularly when it's dark or wet. So yeah, really, really excited and I think, I think it looks like this time we might be able to get this through, given that we've had such amazing community support. And I, yeah, really looking forward to hearing the debate and, sorry, what's that? Just put it, shall we just put it? No, I want to hear the debate. I think it's really important because this is a really important issue for the city and it's a lot of money, so.
So just on the question of timing, there was some discussion about we don't have time limits, but do, is it helpful to have the thing up so we actually do know how, how much we're speaking? I'll take the opportunity to speak here, just to say, I do thank councillor Paul and councillor Day for, and others, for actually persevering with this vision of, that was brought to us as originally as option four. I have changed my view on it. I was very nervous about our capability to deliver it because I knew particularly those years one to three were really constrained. And what's changed it for me is the idea of the rapid rollout. I think that's really responding to the concerns around our, our capacity. But also actually, it's sending the vision, it's setting a vision in place. And there are lots and lots of ways we could do this rapid delivery. And I'm really excited actually that, because I think it'll unleash a whole lot of creativity. Already people have come to me with ideas about low traffic zones, about, you know, sort of things that we can do quickly and fast, separated fences like little, Anne explained to us. But actually, I think there's a lot of, there's a lot of opportunity here for us to map out a real vision for the city. And listening today about the COVID resurgence in some parts of the world that we thought were safe, I think we've got to actually realise there could be multiple reasons why we're doing this. So, you know, it's, I'm very happy to be supporting this in the current form and I commend actually the mayor for coming on board and listening to the council. I know it's not quite option four, but it's so close, it might always be. And, you know, it gives me, I actually think we need to have faith. We need to, I've come to a position where we need to have faith about, about this being deliverable and about it being really acceptable and transformation, acceptable to our residents and actually embraced by our residents and transformational for our city. So that's my, my position. I have got councillor Matthews, councillor Penet, councillor Conde and councillor Sparrow. Oh my goodness, and councillor Fitzsimons, thank you. Oh goodness, a whole list, all right.
Okay, so I'm next, Kiora Koto. I'd like to also speak in support of the Kids Freedom Network and thank officers for their work, thank councillors, especially councillor Tam over there and the community for getting us to this point. Whether you ride a bike, walk, use public transport or drive a car, you need a safe route wherever you need to go. And safe transport infrastructure is not a vanity project or a nice to have. It's a safety and climate project and it's essential infrastructure. And so I just briefly, I want to first of all acknowledge Jennifer Lawless for her amazing contribution today, but also to update you on Julie from Island Bay, who was knocked off her bike this morning with her four-year-old and in a part of Island Bay that is not covered by the cycle lane. And as well as, as having the scary experience of that when sitting by the side of the road after dealing with the ambulance and the police trying to calm her child, that member of the public yelling out to her that against cycleways and saying that she, cycle users don't pay for the, their infrastructure unlike drivers do. So that's really, I think, the definition of insult to injury. But Julie said she was home after the ambulance and police and sorting out her small person. She walked in the door and burst out crying and she's going to have a kapa and a shower and count her scrapes and bruises. So she's an advocate herself for safer cycling and so I said I would be thinking of Julie when I cast my vote for safer cycling today. Kia ora.
Thank you councillor Matthews. Councillor Penet.
Kia ora and yes, I'd like to acknowledge this very serious incident this morning. It's not just the scrapes and the bruises, but the trauma of potentially having lost your life for just doing an ordinary activity. So more positively, I'd like to thank the cycling community for their many years of advocacy on this particular issue. Patrick Morgan and I have known each other for a long time and every year we've come out along with many other people and said, let's, let's build cycleways, let's put more money in. And what's really happened now is that this, this movement has escalated and now there's a huge support around the table, huge support in the community and we are going to be able to do something amazing for our city, a real legacy. I was interested in the first submitter today, where the rates burden was referred to. I personally do not consider it a burden. I consider it an important contribution that we all make to be able to live in such an amazing city. And it's an investment that we all must make to make sure that our city continues to stay as one of the best places in the world to live. I acknowledge of course that people do have some constraints, but nevertheless, without those rates, we cannot have all the amazing services that we do. In terms of safe cycling, I just want to be really clear that this is a health and safety issue for me and it is not actually really a matter that should be consulted on with the public. You know, you know, is your convenience as a driver more important than potentially saving someone's life? And it is very, very clear that our roads are not safe enough. I know there is some diversity of view amongst the cycling community, some people do feel safe, but many people do not and there are many people that would cycle if it was safer. So whilst I of course believe in engaging with communities, I think we have to manage that really carefully because it is not optional about whether someone is hit by a car or not and what we do to protect that person. But I appreciate also the need to make sure that we are listening to people and talking about some proactive solutions which will meet their concerns if they don't support the network. For me, just finally, the most important part of this amendment is the rapid rollout because under option four, years one to three had very little. And so it's absolutely critical, and this is, you know, based on very strong advice from the cycling community, that we start to map out what a complete network will look like. This will enable us to show Wellington what a safe cycle network looks like at a relatively low cost and what exciting opportunities it opens up and how much safer our community will be. It won't be perfect, but it will be much more than we have got at the moment. So thank you very much councillors, a lot of us have worked on these amendments over, over the last few days and councillor Paul obviously and councillor Day, thank you very much for, for taking such a strong leadership. And also I'd just like to thank councillor Free publicly. It is not always easy for politicians to change their minds publicly, but you have done that, you have listened and I'm really proud that you have been able to do that. And just what an amazing thing that we can, that we can say to the city that today is the day that we agreed to have a safe cycle network.
All right, well, thank you for that. It's a bit of a, it's been a work, it's been a work that's been done collegially, so I'm, I, yeah, my thanks as well. All right, so councillor Conde.
Thank you and councillor Penet, you'll be excited to know I'm also changing my mind today. So when, when we voted on this last time, my main, I had two main concerns. One was, was around deliverability and one was around the debt headroom. And both of those have now been resolved and that's why I'm able to vote for this today, which is great. And I want to thank the staff because it's actually due to some great work from staff that we've been able to resolve both of those things. Particularly, I want to thank the, the finance team because I think it was almost 18 months of work that went into the new strategy around our insurance negotiations, which has then freed up $100 million worth of debt headroom within our, within our budgets. And that's, that's amazing, it's just come out in time for us to be able to use it. So we're really, we're really grateful for the timing as well. But that's a, a long piece of work that's been going on for a long time. And the other thing is, is this deliverability around the build back better and the rapid rollout approach, which uses different, different work crews, different workforces. It actually uses a lot of the people we already have contracts with, so it builds on top of our existing contracts. And that's what makes it more deliverable than the alternative option that was in front of us a few months ago. And so I really thank staff for their creativity around that. I just wanted to acknowledge councillor Calvert around the, the concept of build back better. Actually, one of the first things that I did is when I got my portfolio, which I'm about to give away, so this is my final speech on this, was that I asked about what do we do when we renew things? Because the majority of spending we do is in renewals, it's the vast quantity of our budget. And I said, when we renew something, we need to make sure that we're putting it back. We're upgrading it at the same time, if that makes sense, because it's really good value for money. And after, over 18 months, staff have worked really hard to make that a possibility and a reality, where we now have a three-year work program of renewals that are coming up on our streets, which can then go to our upgrades team to look at where we can pair upgrades. I think that's a really, really important piece of work and I'm, I'm really grateful to the staff who have done that over a period of time. Mayor Foster, I think the, the main difference between this proposal on cycleways and yours is that there's an extra $22 million in years nine and 10. I actually think it's really important that that stays in so that we can signal to contractors to gear up for a long program of work and not that we're suddenly going to drop off the cliff in a few years' time. So I actually think that that's a really important thing we've heard from our, from our staff, that we have to signal that we're ramping up. And I think we also need to signal a commitment to that level of, of investment over the long term. So I do think that's a really important element here. It's one of the reasons I'm going to vote for this instead of the option you proposed. I also just quickly want to acknowledge the, the town centre upgrades for Berenpor and Island Bay. I think, you know, both of those communities have had consultation done with them, have had, have been waiting for, for upgrades that have been promised for a while. And so I'm, I'm happy to support that as well and look forward to the officers working on how we're going to roll that out. Kia ora.
Oh, we're doing so well at sticking to our three minutes, it's well done. Councillor Fitzsimons.
Yes, thank you. I just want to note for officers to hear very, very clearly that this is option four with $14 million for Island Bay. That is the option Jill Day, councillor Jill Day who seconded it, made that very, very clear. And if anyone doesn't agree with that, if any officer doesn't, please say so now, because.
Deputy Mayor Free, I can't hear because there's like another conversation going on right here. So.
Okay, I think that's something we all need to be a bit aware of because there's been some going on up here too. So we'll all try and do better so we can hear. Now.
Yeah, I just want, so I just want to be really clear about that. And it's almost like a wedding, if anyone objects, please say so now. But I, and I guess the reason for that is that I moved the delivery of Island Bay into option four at that level and that is the reason why I'm supporting this and that is the reason why I think we can rebuild our, that is the way that we can rebuild our social licence in order to achieve a cycling network around Wellington. Because I do want to sound a word of caution with doing cycleways quickly. That's what happened in Island Bay, it shocked the community and it took cycleway infrastructure back in Wellington and I would argue back in New Zealand many, many years because it divided and shocked a community. They didn't know it was coming and they didn't expect it. So I, I understand the enthusiasm for rapid rollout, but councillor Free has done an excellent job when she had the cycling portfolio, particularly at Crawford Road, of working with communities, of refining the design and making sure that nobody ever again is shocked by the implementation of a cycleway in Wellington. And I know that it's not necessarily the view of many people supporting this, but I'm strongly of the view that we have to take communities with us when we make these decisions. And that's not what happened in Island Bay and it was very damaging to the reputation of this council, the trust that the people of Island Bay can have in this council, but also to the development of cycleway infrastructure around Wellington. And I'll maintain that position throughout the implementation of this option four. And I guess I finally just wanted to comment on that, that I'm particularly pleased, in fact, it's Laurie and I who are, have, have really promoted this, that the inclusion of the town centre upgrades for Island Bay and Berenpor, because these were promised to those communities and not delivered and, and promised in a very, very, very clear way. And there was even a consultation run in Berenpor around this town centre upgrade and it broke the trust of the people of Berenpor when we delayed and despite running a, a very expensive consultation with very flash pieces of paper and visions and lots of people invited, people flew in from Nelson who had an interest in Berenpor, like people were really committed and we spent hours talking about it. And then for them to be told there was no budget for it was just let people down. So I'm, but. Particularly, did you guys want to comment? Sorry. Oh, okay, yeah. Okay.
Look through you, deputy chair, just a suggestion because of the clarity about $14 million for Island Bay. Looking at the words here, it doesn't say that, it just simply says within the envelope of this budget. So the question is, do you want to stipulate that in the decision? And then there's no confusion. So we, we could suggest that we. Be clear councillor Fitzsimons, I think you need to move an amendment.
No, she can vary the words. As I understand it, the option, the top option was up to 17 million, so. No, no, but, but no, that from, from, no, 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 from the, the technical experts, they said the top. So if we put 14 and it needs to be 17, I'm open minded on this, then we have a bit of an issue. So I think maybe it would be better to word it, you know, to, to fund any option that has been outlined by consultants, you know, depending on what we decide.
Okay. Okay, well, we'll move on. So that's been changed up to 14. It's like, you know, anyone else who's got yet to speak can put their own flavour on this if they wish. I kind of need to pick up from where we were. Have you finished councillor Fitzsimons? Sorry for the little interruption there. Okay, so now we've got councillor Sparrow.
Before I launch into mine, can, can we consider, once we've, on any of the staff, can we consider, once we've had three in favour of a certain issue, that we, that we either go to someone on the, to the contrary, or, or vote on it? Otherwise, we're going to be rescheduling our weekend, aren't we?
We have heard three basically in favour. Is there anyone who wants to speak against this?
Yes.
Right, councillors. The floor is yours.
Well, yeah, to a degree, okay. I'm going to time myself because I might go more than three minutes, but I will make up for it for not speaking on other issues later necessarily. Anyway, right, I enjoy cycling. In my school days, a long time ago, I biked 20 kilometres a day to and from school in Christchurch. Just last weekend, I biked around 10 kilometres one way from the central city Christchurch to the eastern suburbs, almost all on off-road, yeah, former roads and trails etcetera, mostly alongside a very picturesque river. It was great, thoroughly enjoyed it. Biking in Tawa during lockdown level four, when there were virtually no cars on the road, was very enjoyable too. And maybe that is a picture of what might come one day. I do recall in conversation saying to one of the people at my table at our recent oral forum, that it would be helpful to hold a referendum on the issue of cycling and cycleways, and that's because we have, we hear a very strong voice from a certain number of people urging us to build heaps more cycleways, and that is to go for option four. And I genuinely wanted to know if that was representative of Wellington's, Wellingtonians as a whole, or basically represented a, well, we'll call them a vocal minority. As we've heard, 68.4 of our submissions supported the accelerated full programme, which is option four. I didn't realise at the time that I was wishing for a referendum, rather impractical, I know, that a survey was taking place, or had actually taken place, to gain that very information. And in that survey, just 7% supported the accelerated full programme, at a cost of more than $200 million. 56% supported the two low-cost options. Despite no-one having referred to that survey this morning, because it may not be convenient to do so, I would suggest, having referred to that survey this morning, because it may not be convenient to do so, I would suggest it's possibly more representative of the views of Wellingtonians as a whole. And we're here to respect, to represent Wellingtonians as a whole, not just certain minorities. I would personally love heaps more cycleways right across the city. However, I'm a realist and realise that many people do need their cars, and it's not quite as simple as saying they should be using other forms of transport, which is what many of the cycling lobby do seem to say. Getting near the end. There will always be a significant number of older people, those less able etc, who will never cycle until we have a first-class public transport system, and that's probably a long way off, they will continue to use their car. Over time, we will be switching to EVs, and most of my travelling within Wellington is in an EV, but it's still a car. Wellington's narrow streets and abundant rainfall mean that it's never likely to be an ideal city for multitudes of cycles. Other than the very hardened. That's the reality for many people, possibly the majority. So I think there needs to be a realistic balance, and in my view, the revamped option three is more than a reasonable way forward. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Sparrow, so do we have any other speakers against? All right, how do we want to go forward? Do we want to, can people perhaps, we will want to vote before we break for lunch, in my view, so if we still want to speak, can we just, councillor Foan, councillor Rush and councillor O'Neill are on the list, let's just try to be efficient.
Kia ora, I just want to acknowledge Jessica for coming in this morning, and Julie and her experience in Island Bay this morning. I am an advocate for the Kids' Freedom Cycling Network, the vision of opening our streets to our children in our city to be future riders, if they choose, and this is what the majority of our submitters ask for, thank you councillor Sparrow for your view, but what we could do is enable the 76% of people who would ride by enabling this network. Nearly 250,000 were counted riding in April, and if we times that by 76%, that's 19 million, that's what we could be looking at riding on a month. Councillor Fitzsimons, thank you, I acknowledge your, I acknowledge what's gone on in Island Bay, but I'm not set on an outcome yet, but I'm happy to go up to where we've settled, but just want to flag that. But actually, what I also, I also want to thank all the submitters, because it was really important to have their participation. But I do want to talk about Berenpor, the poster child for near misses. In 1984, Wellington City Council consulted with Berenpor Village to be improved for safety, and we've continued to consult since then, as councillor Fitzsimons says. But a key thing for feedback in the consultation project was the traffic danger present in Berenpor Village, and this is backed by evidence on, collected on a webpage, and just, actually, I'm not going to read these out for the sake of it, but it is there, it's on Danger Space, and I can't express how much this community suffers with the downhill ramp as cars naturally speed up to come into Berenpor, and I do believe there are things that we can do to improve that for safety for all the schools around the area. So thank you councillor Paul for bringing this amendment, and councillor Day, and for actually getting it out in the last, the earlier LTP, really admire you, thank you.
Well, thank you for that councillor Foan, councillor Rush.
I'll try and be brief, so it's not often that I consult members of the Wellington Party on issues, because, but on this issue I did, because we campaigned on ceasing the programme until, at least finishing the programme that had been started, until we understood a bit better about the value. But the message I got back was actually quite positive, and the message was, you know, if it's practical, if it's affordable, if it still falls within prudent, you should be free to make your own decision, I should add, I'm always free to make my own decision anyway, but I did want to touch base with people who had supported me, so I did that. I have enormous sympathy for councillor Sparrow's position, I also think that the people that I work with, the people that I generally come into contact with, the people who I met on campaign, are not cyclists, and the barriers here in Wellington of climbing Rosekneath Hill, for example, are simply too hard for the average person, and certainly for children as well. Nevertheless, I have been, was impressed with submitters, I've been impressed with Patrick Morgan, and of course, what I heard today. Recently, I voted to try and support a section of our society that were not giving a fair go, why wouldn't I support a section of a community who are at risk? I think at one point in time, perhaps, there was a decision that could have been made that should have been to, that could have amplified funding into public transport, to try and get back the city as it was in the 50s and 60s, where the trams took us everywhere and that freedom was available. However, those decisions were taken away from us by government, now sit with Greater Wellington, and of course, not with us, and we are now, we've now been promoting cycling, I don't think cycling's going away, it's here to stay, so I'm minded at this stage that, given the growth of the city and our transport problems, that we should be investing more in cycling. I frankly am a little bit, I preferred the language of the mayor's amendment, which talked in detail about rapid rollout, whereas that is not part of this submission, but nevertheless, I'll probably not split hairs on it. I would say that the Island Bay community seem to actually want their parade put back how it was, and that would be a least-cost option, and I still struggle to understand why that can't be an option, but nevertheless, at this stage, I'm minded to support.
Thank you councillor Rush. Okay, councillor O'Neill, might be lucky last.
10A, 2, councillors, I just really wanted to slot in, very briefly, don't worry, my support behind these amendments, thank you councillor Paul and councillor Day. We need continued investment to make options and dreams that Wellington City Council preaches as viable. We have heard over 400 people combined reiterated throughout this long-term plan process, that we need an uptake in cycle investment. Many of people who spoke to us sat alongside their children. I want to read out a quote from Kate Day, one of the last submitters we ever had, and her quote was, "It's something where everybody wins, drivers don't want to hit me or my child", and she also brought a very small child that looked under the age of a year old, sorry, Kate, forgive me for not knowing your child's age. And I wanted to just reiterate, on the other flip side of that, equally biking rates among people in the ages of 60 and 79 are soaring overseas. In some Australian states, trips by seniors account for 22% of the nation's growth in cyclists, just in the last 10 years. So I believe we do need to fully fund our climate action, our accessible infrastructure, and make this network a priority. Paint is not protection, and doing it right and doing it well is a priority, and one that I firmly believe in. Lastly, I just wanted to touch on footpaths, so we have heard from our aged community and our disabled people, and many people in our ward, I'm sure we've all followed up many fix-it requests on the SCOTI footpaths outside relevant people's homes, and so, in voting for this amendment, I'm sure you might get a few less ward calls for fix-it requests as well, and that should make us happy too. Lastly, I just wanted to finish that, although we have not had a referendum on cycling, and the survey showed lesser intent and willingness for people to invest in cycling alongside other issues in the long-term plan, that we are representative of Wellingtonians, yes, but on the other side of our role, it isn't just as important to lead public discourse and be leaders for the future, and that's why I believe investing in this cycle network is the right thing to do.
Thank you councillor O'Neill. Slight change for lunch, it's actually been laid out for us, we still have our time constraints, so if we can vote efficiently and quickly, we will have extra time to enjoy the lunch that's been provided before we need to leave. I had thought we were having boxed up, but it's a bit different. Okay, so, I believe we've, now, it has a second, I had a chance to speak, councillor Day, in that case, it's right of reply to councillor Paul, and then we'll move to...
Yep, and then we'll have some lunch, awesome, yeah, and vote, yes, great. Yeah, again, I just really want to acknowledge that when this amendment was brought forward, it did seem impossible to achieve, so I want to acknowledge every councillor and officer that worked to make this possible. One thing, things brought up during debate to respond to is the difference between, no, it's not, that is actually what I was just going to respond to, it's not the same as 3.5, or your cycling option, because something that councillor Fitzsimons brought up is that, for her paraphrasing, this is about working with communities to develop that rapid deployment and not necessarily imposing it on them. And so, the difference here is that we're asking for a report back on that accelerated delivery, so that will allow for some level of input, and, you know, make sure that we don't get that allergic reaction from the community, but at the same time, I think there are some of us who are willing to just get it done, because in cities around the world where they have put a rapid rollout of temporary cycle lanes that have then become permanent and shifted the transport cultures in those countries, they have just ripped the Band-Aid off, and I do think we do need to rip the Band-Aid off, and some of us need to be prepared to sacrifice our jobs to get it done. Yeah, yeah, and I am one of those ones, all right, I'm prepared to give up my job in order to rapidly deploy a network of creative and affordable solutions to uplift safely, safety quickly. So deputy Mayor Free, I'm so proud of you, and thank you for all of the work that you have done over a long time to get the cycleways that you have done, and this one might, you know, it might fall over, but the ones that you have contributed to will withstand the test of time, so thank you for that. And thank you for your amendments on public transport and on the prioritisation, that's really important, and we need to, we need to start with Newtown connections and those southern connections, so thank you for your input into this. Councillor Conde, thank you for, again, also changing your vote and actually being one of the key persons behind the scenes who have, you've made sure that this can happen without imposing it on offices, and you've found a way to bring everyone on board with you, so thank you, again, I think you're the type of person that makes sure that these are lasting solutions and not just quick fixes. Councillor Sparrow, I acknowledge all of your points and I respect where you're coming from as well, and I think the great thing about this is that people who don't need to be on the road, who can get, you know, go towards alternatives, will be able to, so in fact, so I want to acknowledge our elders, who, some of whom do rely on cars, but also disabled people, and say that you will be able to get to your destination quicker because people that don't need to be in cars will be on their bikes and on the roads and in the buses. But I did want to say, just in response to your comments about the cycleways and the responses through consultation and through the survey, yes, we had the number of people who were in support of cycleways and weren't, but the reality is that 92% of Wellingtonians support action on climate change, and this is one of the biggest, if not the biggest lever that we can pull on climate change. And to be honest, when I came on to this council, and even still, I'm not like a hardcore cycling advocate, like, I'm not passionate, like, I wasn't, prior to coming here, passionate about cycleways, because I didn't understand the interconnection between climate action and cycleways and mode shift, and that is the key lever that we can pull around this table. And so I might not be, you know, deadly passionate about cycling, but I am deadly passionate about the environment, and I will die for it as a young person and as an individual person. So, what I will say is that this is the decade of investment, and this is the key thing that we will do in the next 10 years to do the most that we can to reduce our climate emissions. It will not be easy, we will need to take out hundreds of car parks, but I stood for council to make transformational bold change, and we need to rip the Band-Aid off. And, Andy, I want to thank you for all of your, sorry, Mayor Foster, for all of your work here, and I think this is a great legacy for you, and that very soon you will see kids walking and biking on the streets, and it'll be a beautiful thing to see, Kids' Freedom Network, let's go, let's all support it, great stuff.
Now, does anyone want to take anything separately? Or are we, what would you like to take separately councillor Sparrow? 10A, 2, 3 and 4. All right, apart from 10A, 2, 3 and 4, can we vote on the rest?
23, please, as well.
Oh, and 23. Is that clear to the staff, what we've asked for, 10A, 2, 3 and 4? Okay, let's do 10A, 2, 3 and 4 first. Okay, thank you for the help. 10A, 2, 3 and 4. And we will have a division, we will, these are important decisions. Okay, shh, because that is a bit confusing, we're going to redo it, we won't need to get it right. 10A, parts 2, parts 3 and parts 4, we're voting on now. You have to decide. So that's carried, now we need to fill in the other bits, so we've got 10, no, is there anything else that needed to be taken separately? 20. Mayor Foster, did you want 23 taken? Okay, so now we will do 23 separately. Well, we're going to do the rest if no-one's got an allergic reaction to it. So 23 is about the town centre upgrades in Berenpor and Island Bay. You're doing number 23 now, so have a look carefully to make sure you know what you're voting for. It's about the town centre upgrades. And that's carried. So, are we happy to take the rest as a single vote? Well, you can have a look. Can we run through it, please, just scroll through it? Well, it's 10A1 as well, actually, yeah, we didn't vote on one.
Through the chair, the rest is 10A1, 10A5, 22 and 24.
Okay. That's right, we will do whatever anyone requires, we will now do 10A1 and 5. Do you want to do 10A1 by itself? Okay, 10A1 by itself right now. It's all right. Did everyone see what 10A1 was? It was about, I hear it's coming now, yeah, it was just about the reprioritisation. Okay, so that's carried, we'll now do 10A5. Which is about coming back with design and cost options for Island Bay. We'll vote now, please, on 10A5. We'll vote now, please, on 10A5. And that's carried. Now... And so now we only have 22 and 24 out of this packet. We're doing 22 and 24. So that's also carried. So I don't think we have time actually to do justice to anything else. Have you got a very quick one? We are going to need advice on that, so I think we should break for lunch. Okay. We actually do have to eat here. No, listen, I'm actually going to make an executive decision. We are going to stop for lunch. We are going to have time to go to the, you know, whatever, and we're going to have time to eat because we have got an important occasion that we're attending. So we will be back here at 3.30.